I call to order the Palatine County Board of Supervisors' August 3, 2015, meeting. I will lead us in the pledge, and if Mr. Norvig would lead us in the invocation, I'd certainly appreciate it. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we gather once again to make decisions that will affect the quality of life, the health and safety and happiness of everybody in our county and sometimes beyond. Give us the wisdom and the character and the heart we need. Let us see this through your eyes and come up with good, sound moral solutions. We ask for your help without which we can do nothing. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I request, do you have any requests to postpone, agenda add, delete, or change the order of presentation of the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion for formal approval?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. This time we have the Certificate of Appreciation, Special Resolution, Proclamations, and Presentations. Our first one is a proclamation, P. 2015-12, with its 150th anniversary of Guilford Baptist Church, 1865 to 2015. Is anybody here from Guilford Church? Seeing none, can we get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the proclamation.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next proclamation is P. 2015-13, Farmer's Market Week, August 2 through the 5th, 2015, 8th, excuse me, 2015. Mr. Tucker's going to handle this.
Mr. Thompson, Mr. Timberlake, please join me. This is a proclamation for Palatine Farmer's Market Week, August 2 through the 8th, 2015. Whereas farmer's markets are important outlets for agricultural producers nationwide, providing them with increased opportunities to meet consumer demand for a variety of fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthful products sold directly from the farm. And whereas farmer's markets play a key role in developing local and regional food systems that support the sustainability of family farms, revitalize rural communities, and provide opportunities for farmers and consumers to interact. And whereas, the popularity of Virginia farmer's markets has grown dramatically in recent years, from 88 markets in 2006 to nearly 250 markets in 2015. And whereas farmer's markets reinforce and maintain community identity and help foster new businesses and encourage and support the growth of new entrepreneurs. And whereas, the economic impact of farmer's markets include direct benefits to farmers and business owners, but also indirect benefits to the community in stimulating revitalization, enhanced parks and waterfronts, and preserving farmland throughout the economic viability, through economic viability. Whereas, farmer's markets are good for the economy, good for the consumer's health, and good for the community. Now, for their, be it proclaimed by the Palatine County Board of Supervisors as August 2 through the 8, 2015, is Palatine Farmer's Market Week. And the board calls the observance to the attention of citizens and encourages all citizens to celebrate by visiting the Palatine Farmer's Market on Thursdays from 4 to 7 p.m., May through October, at 2470 Anderson Highway on Route 60, Flat Rock Village Shopping Center. Adopted by the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, that was a motion on my part.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Any comments from the board members? Just one brief comment I have. India and, and...
Max.
Max, apologize, Mr. Timberlake. We certainly appreciate all y'all do for the farmer's market of Palatine, having been out there numerous times and got some wonderful food. But I have to tell a quick story. The young people that are there at the farmer's market were very intriguing to me. And then one young man that sold me my marshmallow shooter was a very good salesman. I may hire him one day when he gets a little older. But it was quite a selling he did to me. He talked about the features and benefits of the product, but it was pretty interesting. So, thank you for all y'all do. Please, everybody come out and support him.
And the only thing that I would add is that you visit every Thursday and spend money.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a presentation of our Fire and Rescue Scholarship Award Presentation.
Mr. Chairman and Board, if you didn't know, this year we started a scholarship program. But you can come. We started a scholarship program this year to help out our volunteers who are giving their time and also trying to pursue higher education. I was open to all the active members and also to the family members of our active members because the families actually give up a lot when their loved ones are away from them doing their volunteer duties. So, we have several to present tonight. The first one is from company two, Morgan Kingston. Morgan actually graduated from Patsun High School in 2012. He went to the University of West Virginia, but then had to come home because of family medical issues. So, he's back home, correct?
Yes, sir.
But he's going to Liberty University online, so...
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Huh? At the end? The next one is Alyssa Howland. She's an EMT at the Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department, and she's also a certified nursing assistant. She's getting ready to go away to community college to do pre-medical and looking to be a physician assistant. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you for what you do.
Next, we have Ashley Allen. She's actually the granddaughter of our district chief number one here at the Palatine Volunteer Department, and she is going to Longwood University looking into pre-med stuff, looking in the medical field. Thank you, Carol, for all you do for us. And last but not least, we have Taylor Goodman. He's our assistant chief at the Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department, and he's continuing his education in pursuit of fire service degree. Thank you, sir, for all you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's all you know that you want to say, a couple of words?
Just very quickly, first of all, congratulations to all you, and thank you for all the service you do to meet our citizens' needs. Mr. Smith, I didn't realize you had such a gorgeous granddaughter. She must have got her looks from her grandmother, not you. So, thank you for everything you do. To everyone else out there, thank you for all y'all do to meet our citizens' needs and take care of everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have our first public, our first public comment period. Invite the members of the public to share their thoughts on matters and issues that are germane to county business. This is not a forum for criticism of specific individuals or attacks on any person or group. Not a time, not the forum for political campaigning or promoting a business. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you're an individual, five minutes if you're a group, and please state your name and address when you come to the mic. Thank you. Well, seeing no one, I'll close the first public comment period. At this time, we'll entertain our consent agenda items. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
You have to say motion.
Motion passes five zero. I apologize. Appointment, we have now item number nine, A, appointments to Social Services Board. Tell them page 51 of your packet. Do you think this is in your district, Mr. Hodge?
Yes. Ernestine Taylor has reapplied to be reappointed to the Social Services Board, and we've exchanged voicemails, and she's unable to be here this evening, but she's at church praying for us. So, that was her voicemail message, which is always nice to know. We need all the prayers we can get. So, I would move that she be reappointed to the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all right.
Will understand comments, too. Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
I wanted to tell, thank you, Mr. Hodge.
You're welcome.
Ms. Taylor has been an extraordinary member of the Social Services Board. She's always there, and she always asks the right kind of questions, makes sure that her people are taken care of, and that the finances of the county are taken care of at the same time.
I would reiterate that comment period. Every time I've been to one of the meetings, she's there. She's a very active and participant member. So, again, I apologize, but we'll call for the vote again. All in favor of the vote?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Now, we'll move on to item 10A, a public hearing ordinance, 2015-18, amending the proper conditions approved by the Board of Supervisors for case 0415REZC. Mr. Altman, you're going to take this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening, we have a request submitted by Dean Patrick. Okay. Let me get the mouse running on the wheel a little bit quicker here. Submitted by Dean Patrick, Patrick Construction, to amend the proffer statement for Sayers Landing subdivision, which was approved with 0415REZC, which was a request to rezone the property to RR5 with proper conditions. Sayers Landing has 36 lots located at the intersection of Rocky Ford and Rocky Ford Road and Pine View Drive. The Planning Commission heard the request at their July 7 meeting and made a recommendation of approval to the planning, to the Board of Supervisors. The subject property there is at that intersection. I would point out that if you go to page 88 in your agenda packet, you have a copy of the PowerPoint, or actually, it starts on 80. Yeah, 88, 88. So, 91, we'll note that the property that's missing on that prolonged Rocky Ford Road was not included in the rezoning because the applicant did not own it at the time of the rezoning in '04. Still doesn't own it. The subject property consists of approximately 183 acres. There were two proffers in question. This is the zoning, zoned RR5. The adjoining properties, A10 and R2. And then we have an aggron forested district at the southern portion of the property. The property conditions in question deal with the shoulder and ditch line improvements on proffer number seven and proffer 15 along Rocky Ford Road. So, the applicant has made the improvements along Pine View, and the issue at hand is the improvements along Rocky Ford Road, specifically the improvements opposite this dam structure. So, if you look at the photograph, where the plan set is, is the center line of the new ditch. So, when they cut, when they make the road improvements, as part of the rezoning, the right-of-way was dedicated for along this portion of the road, the western side of the road. But when that, so the ditch line that is there to your left of that plan set, that will then move to where the plan set is. So, that'll be the center of the ditch. We'll have to come up with a shoulder to what is left of the dam to make those improvements. The issue actually arose, as we were discussing, a reduction in the road bond for the project in a meeting with VDOT. Upon VDOT's recognition that this dam is in their right-of-way and the improvements would take about half of the dam away, potentially endangering the structural integrity of the dam, VDOT has no objection to the elimination of the proffer requiring the improvements along this portion of the road. They do not, the county staff does not want the integrity of that dam compromised as a result of the potential work. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission meeting on July 7 regarding potentially having work done further down for the remaining parcels beyond the dam. Staff's position is our recommendation on the work is to only have work done on Lot 1, which is the corner. At this, at this point, at a minimum, we improve that intersection with having those improvements turn the corner along Lot 1. The improvements on the rest of the road, it's, to kind of use a non-technical term, it's almost like having teeth missing in a smile. So, if we're not going to fix the entire road, why would we jump and miss a section? Because now that, those ditch line improvements will then occur, they'll jump back out, and then they'll jump back in. So, what we're recommending is only doing the improvements on Lot 1. One of the, this was a discussion point at the Planning Commission meeting, and I think what the commissioner that represents a portion, well, depending upon what side of the road you're on, I think it's District 2, had a very good observation. One, we have the right-of-way and dedication in hand on that side of the road. Two, in the future, if there were a road project on Rocky Ford, and at this point in time, we do not have one proposed in the six-year plan or on our list, the improvements along that section of the road because of the dam would probably be made to the east. So, we'd probably shift that road to the east to avoid having to mess with the dam and do any damage to that, that portion, that dam. So, when you look at page 74 and 75 of your agenda packet, proffer number seven, which currently reads, "Shoulders and ditches will be provided across the frontage of the subject property on Rocky Ford Road and Pine View Drive shall be constructed to VDOT standards." The proposal is to eliminate the Rocky Ford Road reference. So, then the proffer would read, "Shoulders and ditches will be provided across the frontage of the subject property on Pine View Drive and shall be constructed to VDOT standards." That was what was proposed by the applicant. Staff is recommending that it say, "Subject property and Lot 1 along Rocky Ford Road." And then the applicant is requesting the elimination of proffer number 15, which reads, "The construction of transportation improvements on Rocky Ford requires the implementation of a comprehensive inspection program. To ensure compliance with VDOT standards and specifications, inspection services shall be provided utilizing one of the following options. A, then applicant may retain services of a licensed geotech engineer to perform the required inspection or testing. Or B, the applicant may request VDOT to provide services through the establishment of an account receivable with the contractor." We don't have any objection to the elimination regarding this specifically related to Rocky Ford Road. VDOT is going to make the inspection of that improvement along Lot 1 before they make an acceptance. So, we're comfortable with the elimination of that proffer. That's all I have. If there are any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is here this evening. If you should have any questions of him.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
March, which one's Lot 1?
If you see on the photograph where the yellow line turns the corner, that it goes straight down, that's Lot 1 is up at the corner.
That's what I thought, okay.
Any other questions of staff? You can go first, Mr. Williams. I have a couple.
Billy and Carson and I were on the Planning Commission when this came through. You weren't, March?
No, sir. I get an out on this one.
You get the golden parachute on this one. This is more of a statement than anything else. I think the county took a golf lesson on this one, didn't we? And by that mean, we had a proffer that we really couldn't implement. So, like I said, we took a golf lesson on this, and I hope we'll all make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. March, when...
Mr. Chairman? I do have a question, but you, I mean, I don't mean to...
When you and I rode out there, and we met Mr. Patrick out there, it was kind of perplexing to me why we had gone on and gotten right-of-way so far down Rocky Ford Road, especially with skipping a lot that fronted Rocky Ford Road. And then, I guess, we really fully, at that time, as Mr. Williams said, we've taken a golf lesson, didn't realize how much of the dam would have to be taken to fix those road improvements, so...
I'm okay. The question I do have, seven, we're going to add to the, in proffer seven, we're going to add the language, Pine View Drive and Lot 1 on Rocky Ford. Is that what we're going to add? Because it doesn't read that.
Right. That would be my recommendation. I think that's what I have in the agenda packet, that we add a reference to Lot 1 along Rocky Ford Road and not add the reference where he said, where it says, "The frontage of the subject property on Lot 1," I would add Lot 1 on Rocky Ford Road and Pine View Drive.
That was my understanding when we were out there that day.
Yeah, that's what we talked about that afternoon. Yes, sir.
Mr. Norvig, I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't have any serious objections, so I don't want to sound heavy-handed or anything like that, but, and David chipped in since you were there, but you just mentioned District 2 starts on the east side of Rocky Ford there, so that is, you know, my constituents. You just mentioned that if they had to make further improvements or changes or whatever, they would do it on the east side of the road because they can't do it on the side with the dam. Well, that, how does that impact the property owner on the other side, whereas maybe they would have messed with, you know, four to six feet of property? Now, are they going to go digging in there 12, 15 feet into somebody's property, or what?
Well, if, one, it would take us to create a road improvement project for this section of Rocky Ford Road. We would get that into the six-year plan and begin to allocate funding towards that project for preliminary engineering. Should at some point in time we get ready to go to construction, all the property owners affected along that section of Rocky Ford Road, if there was a right-of-way that was needed, would be, would have that right-of-way acquired through VDOT. So, they would, they would get paid for that portion.
Okay.
That would be bought by VDOT to affect the improvements that are necessary along that section of road.
You just answered my follow-up question. So, okay, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good. So, Mr. Norvig, where this piece of property is, is actually District 4, but right across the street is District 2.
There's some straddle, kind of stratosline a little bit.
It does. It's confusing right there. So, all right. At this, any other questions? Would the applicant like to say anything? It's not necessary, but if you can speak, he'd like you. Okay. Good. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on... 1504, excuse me. I apologize, I lost my place. 04-15REZC. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Since this is in my district, I'll move that we approve, rezone, amending the proffers for case 0415REZC to include the language, to include Pine View and Lot 1 on Rocky Ford Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, we have roll call. Public hearing.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Patrick. At this time, we'll have item number 11A, Resolution R. 2015-77, authorizing Chairman of the Board of Palatine Supervisors to execute a right-of-way agreement with Dominion-Vegian Power. Mr. Latson, you're going to take this?
Mr. Chairman, several months ago, the board approved Verizon is co-locating cell signal on the state police tower, 3834 Old Buckingham. And in doing so, they needed some ground space for their facilities, and we gave them a ground lease for about 200 square feet, which they agreed to pay $450 a month for. Well, as they're into the process, they realized they didn't have utilities there and need a utility easement for Dominion to run them power.
Let's get this straight. Power company didn't know it needed a lease what to run an electric...
Verizon, well, what Verizon thought is they were going to, there's a, there's a property that's closer, and they assumed the property owner would allow them. The property owner had refused to allow them to come across there. And so, they want to come across our softball fields. County staff has looked at it, and what they're going to do is actually run it along the fence line, the Dominion Power, and it'll be buried deep enough that it shouldn't be a problem. But this would authorize the granting of that easement so Verizon can connect their tower.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Only one question, Tom. Do we get any additional consideration?
Not from Dominion. They don't care.
All right. I had to ask it though.
Well, and actually, the reality is, our agreement with Verizon is based upon them being able to actually use it. So, if they can't get the easement, then they will terminate the ground lease, and we won't get the $450.
I understand. I had to ask it anyways.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Can I get a motion here, please?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
No.
Excuse me, roll call.
Yeah, roll call, that's right.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. At this time, we'll move on to item 11B, which is a resolution to establish fiscal year benefits of county constitution officers and employees. And I'll take this one. I'm going to read, read the resolution as it is presented to us tonight. This is, says, "Whereas pursuant to Virginia law, Palatine County Board of Supervisors are required to provide certain benefits to constitution officers of the county. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3008, the constitution officers may enter into an agreement with the Palatine County Board of Supervisors to accept personal system, the personnel system of Palatine County. And whereas pursuant to Virginia law, it is in the discretion of the individual constitution officers as to whether they desire to accept the Palatine County personnel system. And whereas certain constitution officers are elected to participate in the county personnel system, in parentheses, participating officers, by executing a memorandum of understanding. And whereas certain constitution officers are not elected to participate in the county personnel system, now that be it therefore resolved by the Board of Supervisor of Palatine County as follows. The employees of non-participating officers shall be entitled to the same vacation pay, vacation policies, sick pay, and sick policies that are provided to all other Palatine County employees." The employees of non, number two, the employees of non-participating officers shall participate in the salary adjustments contained in the 2015 Employee Classification and Compensation Plan implemented by the Board of Supervisors on July 13, 2015, to the same extent as the employees of participating officers. Said salary adjustments shall be effective July 1, 2015. Number three, the employees of non-participating officers shall be entitled to the same paid holidays and paid time off as all other Palatine County employees. Number four, with respect to non-participating officers, this resolution shall take effect on July 1, 2015. Adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Palatine County on August 3, 2015." Any questions?
Does anyone have a motion?
Any questions or comments, I guess? Can I have a motion?
Move to approve it as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Williams?
David, I'm asking for you.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Finally, my turn. A definite aye. Thank you. Motion passes five zero. I will have some additional comments at the board comment period about this, too, also. At this time, we'll move on to discussion items. 12, we have none?
None.
We'll move on to our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to forward, please speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. Can I administrate your comments?
I would just like to point out the changes in the board calendar, that on your next meeting on August 31, there is a workshop from 4 to 6 p.m. on the Economic Development Plan Draft that is coming to you for the first time. On September 1, you have a 6 p.m. workshop with the Planning Commission on your comprehensive plan. And on September 14, at 7 p.m., it is a joint school board, Board of Supervisors meeting here. They're all here in this building. I also would like to announce or let people know, because we've received calls on this at the county admin building, that the flags around the memorial statue in front of the courthouse, the memorial is not on county property. In 1896, the county deeded the land to Troop Association. Therefore, because it's not county land, neither the county nor the judge controls what is on that tract of land, which is immediately around the war memorial on the courthouse lawn. And that's all my comments for this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have board comment periods. Are there any board comment periods?
Mr. Chairman, too. You will have seen in Palatine today, an article on Clint Arrington of Lonesome Dove Equestrian Center. He was named Ellen and Alan Hometown Hero. We're very proud of him. There are 50 of these hometown heroes across the Commonwealth, and we're pleased to have Clint here in our community. He runs, as you probably are aware, a therapeutic horseback riding for emotionally and/or physically challenged individuals, with particular emphasis on helping veterans. He's actually worked with 1,750 veterans so far, which I think is just phenomenal in think is just phenomenal in our community. Our hats off, our board hats off to him. Secondly, I'd like to call attention to the fact that one of our businesses, Weight Pack, right here on sixty, which designs really high-end technical equipment for filling containers, has just finished the Virginia Economic Development Partnerships Program on export trade, which means they are making a conscious effort to expand their exports of their products outside of the United States. This is extraordinary for us. I think this is exactly the kind of business outreach that we're looking for, to expand the tax base here, but also then create good-paying jobs. We're very proud of Weight Pack and glad to have them a part of our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I have a couple of comments. I was going to mention Mr. Arrington also, having visited out there. It's a wonderful facility and a wonderful thing he does for the veterans. Second thing I'd like to say is, I had the pleasure to read at the, for the library's summer reading program to some young children a couple of weeks ago, and it was the families that were there, it was probably thirty to thirty-five people. I think Ms. Wyler's done this also. It was very, I enjoyed it tremendously, and I had a nice time to sit with Peggy, our librarian, and talk. And one of the things that she brought up to me that was very intriguing is, the library is going to work on helping create a robotics club. Our high school does not have a robotics club, and we have a gentleman who stepped forward, and Peggy's found some funds in her kitty to be able to help facilitate this, and she will be looking for some help from maybe the chamber or the rotary club or whomever else may step up to help. But I think it's, our library continues to be an education center for us, and I applaud Peggy and her staff, and I really enjoyed reading to the young children. So, please, if there's a couple more events for the summer, if you have time, poke your head in. I think you'd be surprised at the enthusiasm and excitement are there. Last thing I have is, we made a motion tonight to pass a resolution in reference to MOUs. And I just want to talk a little bit about the MOUs. Been a lot of dialogue about MOUs going on for quite some time here. Our MOUs were not about control. The MOUs were about efficiencies, equality, fairness. As Mr. Williams said to me once, the MOU started out as a positive thing. It seemed to turn in after we started talking about resolutions to a negative situation. I want to thank all of the Constitution Officers that have signed or have participated in working through trying to sign the MOU. A lot of hard work, thoughts, energies and efforts has entered into those. The Social Service Board has agreed, the Registrar has agreed, the Library Board has agreed to follow their employee manual and entering the MOU. The resolution, again, turned the situation into a negative from a positive. We passed a resolution tonight that I think this board has done to make sure that we are not being perceived as trying to be in control. This was, again, back to our original purpose of efficiencies and various other things that we felt as a board that needed to be done. We are not the only county to have memorandum of understanding with Constitution Officers. However, I wanted to make sure that the public, the employees that work in these offices all understand this was not about control. This past week, unfortunately, we implemented, or fortunately, I guess, we implemented a paying class study. Unfortunately, because of some actions that we took in our July thirteenth meeting, one group of people did not get those raises. How that was communicated to them, I felt was very unprofessional. I will take full responsibility for that. I have met with those individuals and apologized personally. The actions tonight this board took, and I want you to know it's five oh, without any hesitation, fixed that situation. Our staff has worked hard to implement a handbook, I think, that does the things that we needed to be done. And one of the things that I want to point out was, many citizens talk to me, and they don't see our county as a clerk's office or a commissioner revenue office or the treasurer's office. They see it as county government. So, the purpose of all of this was to create an efficient system that created efficiencies for all departments, to include our HR department, so they weren't having to track numerous situations that were going on. So, again, it was not about control.